Jane.
Jane.
Okay. Going to get me contact, we're good? Yep. Good evening. I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization structured at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the campaign's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, the voters, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum which features the candidates for Rochester City Council Ward Number Two, Michael Wojak and Mark Bransford. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidate will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidate will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up even if the end card has appeared. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voter Rochester builder Julie Gilkinson. Questions from the public? We'll check to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Randy Brima-John, Jane Callahan, Deb W. Smith, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions tonight will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Brent Appleman from the Chamber of Commerce. The opening statement for tonight goes first to candidate Bransford. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, Post Bulletin, Chamber, and the Public Library for hosting this forum. This is essentially a job interview, just like any other or unlike any other. Let me begin with my history and why I feel I have the expertise to excel as a city councilman. I have my bachelor's in physics with a minor in math. In the course of getting my PhD in astrophysics, I was a young 24-year-old principal investigator in charge of an international collaboration, creating science still relevant 25 years later. I have led technical teams and rebuilt collaborations where cross-team chemistry was lacking and damaged our ability to produce results the company had hired us to produce. I am the president of Grace Lutheran Church on the lovely Silver Lake where I helped to oversee their operation and budget. I understand the need for objective, critical thinking and have the drive and dedication to be your city councilman. I am fiercely independent in my thinking. There are many in the city who are buzzing with criticism about how the city council is handling downtown, where businesses are closing and we've lost manufacturing jobs to the city's major economic detriment. We have a shortage of housing that people want to buy, and the fact that the council would double their salary and then refuse to take a pay cut and a significant economic downturn has angered many. Many in the city feel disenfranchised and that their concerns are not being heard. I know because I have taken the time to ask and I listen to their voices. It's time for a change in city leadership and I offer you a new plan and a fresh perspective. I humbly ask for your vote on or well before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Wojak.
Well, thank you for the invitation to be here. It's always a pleasure. Even in the darkest depths of heading into winter amid the COVID-19 pandemic, you suggested that we could be succinct and not use the entire two minutes. And I just want to thank you for not losing your optimism. That's really inspiring. It means a lot. Thank you so much. My name is Michael Wojak. I'm one of the senior members of the Rochester City Council and we have a pretty serious job to do here and there are a lot of great things going on in Rochester and a lot of challenges that are facing us. In my 12 years, I've held a number of numerous state and federal roles where I'm on continuing education. I take this very seriously. Chances are, if you have a neighborhood association, I've been to your meetings more than you have. It's always been a big-time commitment for me. I don't skate by on the job. I don't try to do the minimum. I will say that I try to be fair to everyone and lead with honesty and integrity. And the late Michael Padolchi once told me that you can tell a lot about a person, who a person's friends are and you can tell even more about who their enemies are. And I always try to keep the balance just right and make sure that the people that I'm serving are the people that actually need city council to be their voice. I share a lot of values with the League of Women Voters. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. And your team outside of the election cycle helped me and Nick Campion write and pass the Ferry Distorting Act, which is going to be huge for the city of Rochester and the county. We're going to make sure that some of the gerrymandering that happened in 2011 in this area doesn't happen again. Additionally, we've made changes to the city council to try and take barriers from being on the city council. I share your respect for rate-choice voting and the passion for getting that in place. And I also share the fact that we need more diverse voices. And that's not just women, that's people of color as well. And we have gone out of our way to try and create a system that everyone can serve. You don't have to be an old or wealthy white man to serve because we have plenty of that going on. So things like raising the salaries up to $39,000 while still not anywhere close to the county, we're opening doors for more people to serve the community and give the time they need to be successful.
Thank you. The first question comes from the public and it goes to candidate Wojak first. Lack of affordable workforce housing has been a problem for years, from apartments to duplexes and townhouses to starter homes on small lots. What measures do you favor to increase the supply of affordable homes such as changes in zoning or building codes, helping residents with repairs, incentives for builders, et cetera?
The et cetera one is awesome. I love that one. We've got to be honest and say this is a problem that a lot of communities are facing, not just us. I'm going to move this down a little bit. And there are a number of things that we've done right and a number of things that we can continue to do. The most important thing is getting the comprehensive plan in place and adjusting the way we do the fee structures. That is so important because we used to subsidize million-dollar manages at the same time we couldn't build affordable housing. Now we're charging market rate for the different infrastructure and services that are applied and we're expanding our community. We're doing infill development and going to places where we have existing infrastructure. In the big picture, that is the first key step to getting affordable housing. Biggest thing, we have to take on nimbyism of that. It's such a, everyone knows we need affordable housing but not in my backyard. You can't add density here along the major corridors, along the major transit ways. We need to invest in those areas with density allows it to be affordable. Single-family detached is not the direction to get to affordable housing.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford. Same question. If you ever want me to repeat the question you just asked.
No, yep. This is one of the main pillars of my campaign and I think that we are going in the very wrong, very wrong direction for building affordable housing. Simply put, we need political willpower. We need a line item in the budget. We need staff dedicated to creating it. And we need to really back off on the infrastructure fees and permitting costs that we charge developers so that we can make housing of all types, from wheels to higher-end luxury. But let's talk in apples-to-apples comparison of competing philosophies and city growth. Outward or upward? Why not both in a balanced, measured way? Des Moines, a city that is far more like Rochester than Minneapolis, developed a comprehensive plan that specifically embraces outward expansion in addition to modest centralized density, vast efficient permitting, sane infrastructure hookup fees, and small lot sizes, among others. I went there. I read their plan, looked at their zoning laws and future land use maps. Des Moines balanced growth as their economy booming with a plan that, very importantly and in stark contrast to our own, specifically states an avoidance to overdevelop any neighborhood or sector. Their median house cost is $150,000. Ours is $250,000. We're doing something very wrong.
Thank you. The next question, rebuttal. I see you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Joe Weiss, who is probably the principal in affordable housing, is supportive of me as is every person who actually develops affordable housing in Rochester. And the reason for that is that I actually do the steps to get it done. We can talk in platitudes all we want. If we do not charge developers infrastructure fees, that means we pay it through fees and taxes ourselves and we have lots of geographic expansion available to the northeast and northwest. That's included in the Plan to Succeed. We know that because we worked with the development community in creating that plan.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Bransford. It is from the League of Women Voters. Do you feel the city too often hires outside consultants? Is this a symptom of under-hiring needed staff?
Well, we definitely have hired a lot of consultants and paid way too much for them. I'm not sure exactly why we needed to hire all of those consultants and not keep some of that local. We have a lot of local talent that understands how to build cities and construct cities and grow cities. But a lot of the consultants haven't fixed our affordable housing problem. We have plans with lots of pretty pictures, but they're really not helping the city grow in the way that we should because housing is our number-one priority. And we have people living in very poor conditions and they need help. We need TIF to fix blighted areas, which we haven't been doing. I don't know why the consultants haven't figured that one out. So we've spent and wasted a lot of money on consultants.
Thank you. Candidate Wojak.
Well, I guess I would start by saying we literally had a ribbon cutting today on a residential mixed-use facility that was fixed and part-using TIF. So I would say it's probably fair to say that it is going on. Consultants can be a catch-all term, but we have to realize is the reason they use consultants is it's a skill set that you don't use often enough to have your own internal staff. We've actually taken a look at some of the project managers that we have in the city of Rochester and we created five new positions funded by DMC that specifically takes what we used to do as consultant work and bring it in. But a lot of the work that we're doing, whether it be artistic in nature or very eclectic, unusual kind of construction, those are very specialized skill sets and that's where the consultants tend to shine. Also, one of the big accomplishments that we've had is trying to get the transit line going and getting our application in. We've done that, but we certainly didn't have the kind of expertise and house to do that. So we partnered with SRF and other firms to help get that happen. It's not an either-or with consultants. It's that you use consultants when you don't have the internal capacity and it's much smarter to do it that way.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Post Bulletin. Randy Peterson. Candidate Wojak will answer first.
When city staff and city advisory boards disagree on a recommendation to the council, which opinion do you believe should carry the greater weight?
Well, I don't think there's any fair way to answer this question besides saying it depends. It depends on the issues and it depends on the content. What I will say is that one of the obligations, and this is something for people who haven't served in office before, they don't necessarily realize this, we have some times where we're applying laws and have to do it fairly. And then yeah, you better listen to what the city attorney has to say as he does the research with that. I am a big believer that in the areas that we have discretion, if there's disagreement between the boards and the staff, we give both of them the opportunities to explain that and that's what I've traditionally done. I typically call members of the boards and talk to staff ahead of the meetings to make sure I understand where the differences are coming from and whether it's something that's based in legal, technical fact or something that's a matter of opinion. There's obviously a lot more flexibility with the latter.
Candidate Bransford.
Sure. It really boils down to communication and it has to do with understanding both perspectives. There's never one side to any issue. Both sides can be right particular ways and wrong in others and it's just a matter of sitting down at the table and figuring out, you know, a good compromise and voting appropriately.
Thank you. The next question is from Brent Appleman of the Chamber of Commerce for candidate Bransford.
All right, this is a two-part question regarding small business. How would you evaluate the effectiveness of the current city economic relief programs funded by CARES Act dollars? And what additional measures should the city implement to support local small businesses?
That's a really good question. I guess the proof is in the pudding because if the relief were really helping, we wouldn't have businesses closing left and right. I'm sure it does help, but it's clearly not helping enough. In terms of what can be done to help small businesses downtown, you know, I was thinking about this today and, you know, and there's got to be some economic stimulus, some forgiveness of taxes, rents, things that the city can do to help small businesses stay downtown because they're closing left and right. They're all moving up to West Circle Drive. It's a complicated problem and I'm sure there's numerous sources of funding that could be looked into to help them. I know a lot of small business owners are not happy and that says a lot to me about how well the city is doing to help them.
Thank you. Candidate Wojak.
This is a difficult situation because there isn't a playbook for a pandemic and we're going to lose a lot of businesses no matter what we do. That's the nature because honestly, for some of these industries, there's not going to be the customer base that was traditionally there and that, we have to realize that. You know, I talk to my colleagues all around the country and talk about what they're going through and what we're going through. And it's, you know, we're not doing anything uniquely poor here and we're not doing anything uniquely outstanding. I can tell you that we're actually weathering it a little bit better here in Rochester than a lot of places are by a lot of independent metrics that you look at. And there are businesses that are upset because they're having a hard time making it through no fault of their own. It really is the pandemic. We do try to listen, reach out, explain things. Sometimes things aren't very clear. Social media makes it worse because sometimes stuff will get said that's just factually not correct. In terms of how we allocated the CARES Act, we had about $8 million. The county had a lot more. I think that the three-way distribution that we did, looking at support for people, support for businesses and the government infrastructure that has to change, is a fair way of doing it. We've been nimble. We've been adjusting things as we've gone. We are always open to making ourselves better, but I do think that our response is measured with the tools that we have.
Thank you. The next question is from the general public and it goes first to candidate Wojak. How involved should council members be in setting the budget? What do you think the role should be of the new city council president and the new city administrator in this process?
I'm sorry, could you go back and repeat the first part of the question?
Correct, I will. How involved should council members be in setting the budget? What do you think the role should be of the new city council president and the new city administrator in this process?
Well, I've been involved in the big transition that we've seen in the city of Rochester. It used to be that the city administrator would go into his office, write up the budget, come out and if he saw his shadow, we had a budget six weeks later. And that's not the way that I think that the budget should be done. I think the new process, which is actually, we've received accolades from the business community, the Chamber and others, that we start very early on in the process, a little bit delayed this year because of the pandemic, but we go through with the baseline budget, the inflationary changes of things that we don't necessarily have control over. And then we talk about different decision packages on things that we can add, delete, replace, do better, find partnerships for. And this has been a much better way. What's particularly helpful with this city administrator, and this has just been such a monumental change for the city having this kind of budgetary vision, is he will speak with the council members and make sure that some of the things are individual priorities or priorities for parts of the city that are important to us, at least get up for discussion, knowing that not everything's going to be funded immediately. But that's the kind of input and that's the kind of teamwork and collaboration between a good administrator and a council that we're seeing now and we're getting used to seeing.
Candidate Bransford.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I definitely believe there should be a collaborative mechanism for go back and forth between the staff and the city council. Obviously, the city administrator has a fundamentally important role in creating the budget, but I believe there should be some feedback. For example, I would like to create a line item in the budget for affordable housing. I'd like to see transparency in that line item for things like how much we charge area builders for infrastructure fees and permitting fees versus what that actually costs. I have a lot of data here, real data, real permit fees, real infrastructure costs that show this notion of infrastructure sprawl is not accurate. And so I would like to see things in the budget that would reflect that. So that would be the kind of input I would like to give into the budget process.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters and it goes first to candidate Bransford. How does the Rochester community make sure we never have a George Floyd incident?
Yeah, well, God willing, it never will. And the police chief and the police force have done an amazing job with interacting with the city, the nights out, the way that they have changed their hiring practices to increase diversity. He told me once that they, when they stopped a person for having a taillight out or a headlight out, they just gave them a coupon to go get it fixed. So it was a positive experience. Those are the kinds of interactions we need to have with our police. And I think that they have done the things that they need to do along with having social workers in the cars to go to some of the calls have been very important. In fact, I think that they're way ahead of the curve in making sure that we don't have one by preventing it upfront.
Thank you. Candidate Wojak.
One of the things that I made careful that I realized is I am a privileged white male sitting on a government body that is full of those types of folks and I make it a point to get out to events and talk to people of color, talk to people who are in different situations from my own and hear what they have to say. Through that work, I've been endorsed through both by both the Sierra Club and Rochester for Justice because they know that I live the values that they're looking for. George Floyd is the result of a deficit of trust. There was, George Floyd was murdered by a police officer. We don't know if there's going to be justice and that's the problem. We've so many times we've seen there hasn't been justice and that creates a bigger and bigger situation. We could have something down here and it could explode. We need to rebuild that trust. We need to take racism head-on. We have this idea in Rochester that somehow it is worse to call out when somebody does something that's racist or says something that's racist. I got a lot of blowback for calling out the former mayor's comments when he made the disparaging remark about Colin Kaepernick. But we need to do more of that and I know it's not Minnesota nice to take on racism and call this stuff out. But we need to do it more because if 40% of our population, our children, are colored, we're all going to suffer if we have racism as prevalent as it is now.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Wojak. It's from the Post Bulletin.
What do you see as a city's role in encouraging the economic development throughout the city?
When I consider these roles, I like to consider if it's something that you should lead on, partner on, or support others. And this is one of those that I think is more important to support others and partner with others. DMC is actually doing a tremendous job and I'm not sure when folks are going to watch this, but on October 7th, there's going to be an amazing webinar talking about the kind of economic development that's actually happening with DMC despite what you might feel is actually going on. I think that DMC is a good partner. I think that we are in a place that we have to reevaluate our relationship with the Rochester Area Economic Development Agency. There's obviously some change going on there. I would say though that there is nothing that drives growth in a community than success of your existing industries. I'm not a person who believes in elephant hunting, which is going out and trying to find that big one and bring it here. I believe in economic gardening. That is, you nurture the small companies that are here. So if people say, "Well, you're not going out there trying to bring in big companies." You're right, that's not what I believe in. I believe in having the education and talent here, having a great place to live, and then succeeding from that.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford.
Thank you. It is a combination of all of the above. We need to lead. We need to partner. We do need to attract back our manufacturing jobs that we kind of let go without a whimper to the tune of a lot of millions of dollars to our economy. I believe we should get those back. We do need to encourage bigger businesses and smaller businesses to come, but in the economic climate we have with the cost of land and housing so high, I think that's a difficult proposition. I have talked to many people in this town who are in charge of rental spaces and businesses who know people from outside of town who said that they're just not going to come here because it's too expensive. The basis of that is housing, again, housing. If we don't have housing, workforce-priced housing that people can afford, then businesses aren't going to come here and we need to fix that. So part of the economic development we need is to make sure we don't just centralize all our housing. We need a balanced approach where we have low-density housing and modest, high-density housing in the center. We need it both, but not just all in one spot.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Chamber of Commerce and it's for candidate Bransford first.
Now, this is following up a little bit on Randy's question. Randy's was about economic development. This is a little bit more on workforce development. According to the most recent numbers, Rochester MSA unemployment is sitting at just over 8%. What steps can and should the city take to support these job seekers and help put our community back to work?
Yeah, that's a great question. I also have met with some of the people in the social justice movement like Crystal Smith and Jackie Booth and have talked to them about the things that they need. Number one is housing, but if we can fix up some of the housing that they live in, I'd also like to see there be an effort in, you know, for trade jobs, have more community education so that they can build a trade and get jobs and add to our workforce. The other thing is, is that there are a lot of spouses of Mayo employees and other companies here in town that don't have jobs and that is a metric called trailing spouses. I don't know if that's the PC term or not, but there is a large pool of people that can work and I think that that's a carrot to some of the companies. If we can get them to actually want to come here and invest in Rochester, which is getting very expensive to do, that we could have a ready-made workforce that we could say, "Hey, here, we've got a big pool. Bring in X company and we can help you thrive."
Candidate Wojak.
Please repeat the question. Sure. According to the most recent numbers, Rochester MSA unemployment is sitting at just over 8%. What steps can and should the city take to support these job seekers and help put our community back to work?
There is a great disconnect in the economy right now between the skills that people have and the skills that employers need for better-paying jobs, but I don't want to turn my back on the low-wage workers either. I've always been an outspoken proponent to making sure that we raise our minimum wage to a living standard for the community. There is nothing that's going to help issues like affordable housing and educational attainment as much as people just having the resources to do it. So for a long time, I have stood in opposition to those who try to keep minimum wage low here in Rochester and there's a lot of prominent folks that have done that. I do think also when I tell you about the different roles that we have, whether it's the partnership or whether it's the leading on something, this is one where we really have to support another entity because workforce development is not in the core of what a city is and what they do. So it's important that we not necessarily extensively focus our resources there but figure out how to make other entities more effective. The example that I give is we're much better at planning and understanding transportation costs than the school district and they're spending $10 million a year on it. We need to make sure that we're making good location and transportation decisions to lower those costs so those funds become available for better workforce development.
Thank you. The next question is from the public. Goes to candidate Wojak first. Should the city be involved in monitoring short-term rental housing like Airbnb?
Yes, in fact, I believe we've passed it and we've got it funded. So yes, nothing more to say.
That's the same. Candidate Bransford.
Yes, indeed, we should. And one of the things that has happened in a nearby high-density development that I live nearby, they have two floors of extended stay. And I've actually come to really like that idea. One of the things that's nice about that is that there's a ready-made product in a larger building with- larger building with lots of units, and that might take a little pressure off the speculative buying of some of the affordable houses in, say, Fallon neighborhood, and there's a lot of complaining about rental houses and short-term rentals. So I would actually encourage some of the development along Second Street, when they do get more high-density, to add floors that do include short-term rental or extended stay units, because I think that will protect the neighborhoods from too much speculative buying.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Legal Women Voters. Goes to candidate Brandsford first. There is a growing movement in Rochester to adopt ranked choice voting for city council and mayoral races. Do you support ranked choice voting? Why or why not?
I don't necessarily think it's proven to be effective, and you can point no further than Jerry Brown in California that vetoed it. I think that it's potentially a great idea, but one that I just don't think that we need to increase the cost of voting and balloting right now for something that may or may not really truly be effective. I've seen examples where it works, I've seen examples where it doesn't work, but it's really telling to me that the governor of California has said no.
Thank you. Candidate Wojtek.
Well, yes, absolutely. I've been a champion for this for a long period of time, and you need to look no further than our primaries and how people of color have less of a playing field in these low-turnout primaries. And we've seen this time and time again, that where you put ranked choice voting in place, and it's been successful in both Minneapolis and St. Paul, you actually start to get elected officials that look like the community. I mean, I am 43 years old. I know I look really good for 43, but I'm 43 years old, and the reality is, I am the second youngest person in government at any level for the city of Rochester. That is nuts. That is absolutely insane. We don't look like the community, we don't have people of color having opportunity, and that's why this is a movement to sweep in the nation. It gets rid of spoiler votes, it substantially lowers the cost of elections because you can do away with low-turnout primaries. And I get it, there's this conservative group of, they used to be the Tea Party here in Rochester, that can't stand ranked choice voting. We just need to move on from those folks and be the progressive community that we need to be.
I think I see a rebuttal.
Yes.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I do want to address this notion of the city council and government not reflecting the local community, and it is true. I agree with that. But in speaking with some of the people from the social justice movement, part of it is, they feel disenfranchised. They feel like they're not being listened to, that if they even try, they won't succeed. They are, in some cases, even fearful for speaking up. And what we need is a strong citizen council that will work with the new diversity administrator that will give the community those role models so that they want to be civically engaged.
Thank you. The next question goes to Michael Wojtek. Wojtek first, and it comes from Randy Kiefer from the Post Bulletin.
The city has been providing access to a day center for people facing homelessness in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Do you support funding a permanent day center or shelter in the city?
Yes, and this is an issue the county needs to lead on. We actually have a very specific direct housing line item in all of our budgets, and if the HRA is a scandal or levy, the HRA needs to be leading on these issues. So to the extent that the city can partner or support, that is our role, but the county HRA needs to be using their housing funding for this.
Thank you. Candidate Mark Brandsford.
Yes, there definitely should be, and one of the things that I came across long ago was the county is definitely the leading agency, but there is a plan from the county, combined with the city and a few other agencies, that have a very nice workout plan to help engage with the homeless and get them into housing and the services they need. And it is a plan that could have a committee that oversees success, rapid-response teams that can go out into the homeless population and get them into the housing they need, the shelter they need, and show a compassionate face and actually get out there and work with them and make sure that we can build all this housing, but we need a task force to actually really make that efficient and work.
Thank you. The next question is from the Chamber of Commerce. Brent Ackerman.
Okay, moving on to transportation. As a member of the city council, how will you prioritize local transportation projects, and what steps can be taken to help mitigate the disruption these projects will cause on local businesses and residents?
Well, first and foremost, these big projects are going to cause disruption. There is no doubt about it, and when they cause disruption, you want to get in there and out of there as quickly as you can, or if it's going to be a longer project, work with the folks there. North Broadway, we got it in hell fairly quickly and were able to do it during the pandemic. Heart of the City took on, it's a longer project, but we spent an extra million to try and provide access throughout the project. I do believe that the core transit is the biggest need in the city of Rochester, and we have prioritized that. We have our Small Starts grant in. I'm the only candidate for this position who supports moving ahead with that $120 million project, and we got our grant in. You can go back to the primary to find that. And I think it's critically important because that's going to drive probably more than $1 billion of growth along that, and it's going to make the downtown more efficient and easier to get around for not for everyone, including drivers. Our downtown parking is going to be more focused on hourly and short trips, which is good for businesses because we don't want people just parking cars downtown all day because that doesn't support the businesses. And then with that, I would be remiss if I didn't point out how committed I am to building a complete bicycle and pedestrian network throughout the community that is safe for everyone. Every year, we're getting a little bit better. Every year, we get pushed back, but I'm proud of the progress we're making.
Thank you. Candidate Brandsford.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the need for the transit system downtown. We do have a peak-time traffic problem, but I'm not terribly excited about some of the implementation details that it would have, like street diet and median planters that are unsafe. So there are some aspects to this transit plan that I would like to revisit. There's no real indication that 7,000 to 10,000 people will be going back downtown to work, and that's a significant thing that we can say they will, but we don't know they will. We don't know if we're going to get a vaccine. We don't know if there's going to be another wave of COVID that will keep people home. We have 30,000 people that commute from out of town, and there is a lot of parking downtown right now. I know they want to raise the rates up to $200 a stall, but people will pay that. And so you're going to have a rapid transit system fighting with an influx of cars. I think we're going to create more congestion. So there's a lot of questions that I have about it. One thing that I know, my wife worked with somebody who had to take two buses and over an hour and a half to go from north side of town to the south side of town. Where is the transportation for them? We're focusing on downtown way too much.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Brandsford, and is from the public. Do you favor the current Graham Park master plan, and what would you propose to do with the Seneca property that is adjacent to Graham Park?
Yeah, I would have to look at the details of that plan a little bit more, but the Seneca building, I would like to see the manufacturing jobs come back. I mean, we have ready-made manufacturing warehouses, and, you know, I'd like to see those go back to having manufacturing jobs come back.
Thank you. Candidate Wojtek.
Well, I would enthusiastically support it if somebody would bring me a plan on how they're going to get a canning plant open back up, because sometimes the economy changes and jobs change with that. It's sad what happened with Seneca and some of these other folks, but these were trends that were happening, but it's exciting that we have hundreds of good new jobs coming in downtown. What was kind of missed in the question is that this is a county property, and the Graham Park master plan is a county issue, and county has some pretty strong opinions on that. So what I would say is that my belief is that Graham Park should be more of a community asset than it is right now. I think there are a lot of things that are ripe for change, and whatever goes on down there, I would like to see a net increase in both the quantity and quality of green space available.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Legal Women Voters. What is your, and it goes first to candidate Wojtek. What is your position regarding the odd-even parking restrictions versus using a snow emergency declaration when warranted for snow removal?
Very timely, because this is about the time of year my inbox lights up with that. And I would say the missing piece right now is that we made these changes for some very specific reasons, and we've asked our team to come back and show us the data for how it's working. People think of this as being snow removal, but it's not just that. We have shoulder seasons where we have to do street sweeping, and the quality of the street sweeping we do actually speaks to the environmental quality of the waters that we have, and that's why we do it in some of these shoulder seasons as well. Most places in town, there is plenty of parking available everywhere, so it's just a matter of folks have to park, you know, 20 feet further away in a lot of cases. And, you know, a lot of people don't like being told where they have to park, but this is very common in northern climates. And the other issue with just having a snow emergency is we do go back and do some cleanup after events, and you know when the big snow comes, but you don't know when the cleanup crew is coming out there. On the city side, we need to do a better job of making sure we're coordinating our work activities with the side that's going to be clear so that we can justify the people of Rochester. The ultimate reason that we're doing this is we did it to save money. This is one of those things, everyone says, government needs to do more with less. Well, this is something that makes our 40 or so trucks that are out there plowing more efficient. It's a measurable savings, how much we are looking forward to seeing, and that's the reason we're doing it.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Wojtek. It's from the Post Bulletin.
I, I, I...
So you have to speak up when I do this. Pardon me, candidate Brandsford. I'm sorry.
Alternate, alternate street parking is fine. I just think that we need to make sure that we really skinny it up into the season where we really, truly might expect to get snow. But there's nothing wrong with just an emergency snow removal ordinance. It works just fine in a lot of other cities. So there's really no particular reason why we need an alternate side parking. However, the street sweeping is a good point, and I'm somebody who listens to both sides of the issue, and that actually is a good idea, so.
Thank you. And now, we are ready for a question from the Rochester Post Bulletin.
What's the city's role in historic preservation of privately-owned properties?
The candidate Brandsford.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry, my feet have tangled.
Not at all. What is the city's role in historic preservation of privately-owned properties?
Well, I can give you a very specific example. Right now, up on Hill Hill, there's the Oley property, which is a very, very, very famous old property, double lot with a house that was built, I believe, by the Mayo Brothers, and it's been there for a really long time. There are some private developers that own that lot and want to split it. It's in a historic district, and the neighborhood there is up in arms about that. And I think as a city council person, you would at this point have to step back and let the developer and the neighbors work together, but you also have to listen to your constituents. At some point, you have to say, well, you know, I have to side with my constituents. And, you know, there is some question about the way that the lot is being split right now, so you have to look at the legality of it. So there are times when I think the city council could get involved, and others when I think they should just stay out.
Thank you. Candidate Wojtek.
Would you repeat the question?
What is the city's role in historic preservation of privately-owned properties?
I thought that's what it was. Okay. Just real quick on the lot subdivision, that's a mathematical equation that's used and done by staff, and it has nothing to do with preservation because there's nothing in the district that calls out an empty lot as being historic. What I would point out is I think that the city has a role of guiding, providing fair incentives, and also making sure that we apply the rules fairly. I've always been a longtime supporter of a downtown historic district, but I also respect that there's a lot of times where there are parts of buildings, for example, that should be saved, but you can adaptively reuse and perhaps even expand in certain ways. I'm a fan of that, but I do think areas like our historic Third Streets, parts of the Hill neighborhood, and even parts of Broadway, I do think that we need to have a historic district there. I think we have some other works projects that we can work in with some adaptive reuses as well. These are complicated questions because nobody likes to be told what they're doing with their property. At the same time, that's exactly what zoning is, and we deal with that all the time. So I think having a fair set of rules and applying them fairly is probably the most important thing. And I would say that it's important also to realize what is historic, because the Hill district, for example, is historic. There are things that are spelled out as being historic, and there are other things that are not, and it's important that we focus on what is actually historic.
Thank you. The next question is from the Chamber of Commerce. For candidate Wojtek first.
With the pandemic creating significant revenue challenges in the city, what are your budget priorities moving forward, and how do you balance the need to provide services with the reality of less revenue?
Yeah, this is one of those places where there's a little bit of a delayed effect because cities are reliant on sales taxes, or, I'm sorry, on property taxes more than other things, and that's going to mean that actually our 2020 and 2021 are a little bit more stable, but we could face some challenges after that. And probably the biggest thing we need to do is continue growing taxable projects like we have been doing. That's going to help counteract that a little bit. In terms of budget priorities, we kind of laid that out. Even when you're effectively cutting, we cut $100 million, or about 17% from the budget for 2021, we're still making some key investments. We're investing in diversity inclusion director. We're also investing in some store and rental issues. We're taking on some key projects, moving ahead with some transit pieces. So you still have to make some priorities, and those are the priorities that I support this particular year. No doubt about it, when you freeze the levy, which means the entire community is probably going to see some pretty good tax decreases on city taxes on just about every property in town, that means you do have to cut some things. And we're doing a lot of short-term things, using rainy day funds, and you can do that for a year or two, and I hope that we can recover from this before it gets more dire than we're already at.
Candidate Brands.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. With the pandemic creating significant revenue challenges for the city, what are your budget priorities moving forward, and how do you balance the need to provide services with the reality of less revenue?
Right. I think that, again, I'm going to go back to my housing mantra, that if we were to allow for more affordable housing, we would get people to live in Rochester, increase the tax base. We need to have a line item in the budget for housing. We need to figure out how to get more housing that more people would want. The other thing, too, is all these bike lanes have no return on investment. I think those should be shelved.
Okay? So, candidate Wojtek. You've already answered the question. Sorry. We'll move on to another question from the public. And this goes first to candidate Brandsford. Do you support fully funding 125 Live for our seniors?
That one is definitely an interesting place. My daughter, who has Down syndrome, does adaptive park and rec there. It's a park and rec-owned building, and although it was a little rocky, I think that the relationship between adaptive park and rec and 125 Live is awesome. They have a wonderful arts community there. I know someone that does a pottery class there. I'd like to see them do an adaptive pottery class there. I think they do deserve some of our funding to keep going. I don't think that we should fully fund them, but I definitely think we need to figure out a way to keep them going because it's a wonderful asset.
Thank you. Candidate Wojtek.
Well, if this were the spelling bee, I'd ask you to clarify what you mean by fully funding, because fully funding can mean a whole bunch of different things. But we do have a role in providing a quality of life for seniors. I actually lead a volunteer bike ride out of there with seniors, an age-friendly ride that we've been doing for a while now. You know, the stories you hear about people who are living on their own, and this is their connection to the community, this is what's keeping them healthy and probably saving us a lot of money because they're able to live independently far longer. These are important things we can do as a community. So I absolutely believe that some level of funding is appropriate. In the case of 125 Live, probably even quite a higher level of funding into the future for a number of reasons. And the way that we probably need to get there is take a look at that whole facility maintenance, because I've not been happy with how the Parks Department has managed capital projects over the years and also our relationship. So I'm very interested in seeing some changes to that relationship and perhaps an outside agency being more effective with the funds we're already giving them.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Legal Women Voters. Goes to candidate Wojtek first. How should Rochester ensure financing for quality-of-life items such as library, parks, theater, art, and music?
A question after my own heart. I love it. Thank you so much for that question.
One of the options is certainly having a levy referendum, which we're doing for the parks right now. And I am voting yes. So I've been a consistent supporter of this, and I encourage everyone to vote yes on that. It's a small amount of money. It's good for our parks. That's one way of doing it. I have been a defender of trying to keep money going to our partner arts organizations. Unfortunately, we've had some management and board issues with some of them. But I'm very happy to announce, because we have been working with them and basically forced some changes, that we have organizations that are going to be doing much better. The library, I'm passionate about. We know we have a lot of facility challenges. We're sitting in it right now. What I would say is, we are looking at some innovative models. I'm a longtime champion of what's called public-private partnerships, or P3s, ways of potentially creating new public buildings that are a fraction of the expense that you would typically have, because, as the previous questions indicated, we do have real issues with funding moving forward. I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat the question.
Candidate Bransford. Here we go. How should Rochester ensure financing for quality-of-life items such as library, parks, theater, art, and music?
Yeah, it's true. We need public-private partnerships. The Rochester Civic Theater is near and dear to my heart, and I definitely would like to see some funding from the city. And definitely, you know, they have survived on donors for the longest time. But I've been there, and it's a wonderful thing that they do and the service they provide. So it takes both. The library is a wonderful place, and I would actually like to see some money put into the library to be fixed up and made modernized in some ways. I had this crazy idea of adding a third floor and putting a planetarium in the library. I think that would be a really cool thing. It's pie in the sky. I don't know where we would get the money for it. But the Parks referendum, in a post bulletin answer, I did say that I didn't think that the time was right. But what I meant by that is, and I think I articulated there, is that I don't want it to fail. I want the Park referendum to pass. I was just afraid that, given our economic environment, that it wouldn't, that it was the wrong time. But please vote for it, because the parks need our money.
Thank you. And I think we see a rebuttal?
Yeah, I want to talk about the library, because it's a current topic right now as well. And we've actually looked pretty extensively about modernizing this building and putting on a third floor. And it's not nearly going to be as financially viable as some of these other options. The planetarium, I'd be done with that. That's a cool idea. We could maybe just, we could get on board with that. You'd be the expert on that one. I'd want you running that sucker. I would say the biggest thing, though, is that these opportunities that are before us, it's incredibly important that we, even though we're going through some crises right now, we need to take the time to explore some of these opportunities and figure out how to make them work. And I think there's a big opportunity with the library. There's a lot more information coming out. And these don't just happen. This has been a multi-year process to get to this point.
Thank you, candidates, for your answers. This concludes the questions for tonight. We now move to the closing statements. And for closing statements, candidate Michael Wojciech will go first.
All right. I'm just going to take a second and make this down a little bit, because I've been getting that a little bit. So I'm trying to help this out. All right. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to watch. I'm a big believer in transparency. In fact, Nick Campi and I rolled and passed the Transparency Act, which has fundamentally transformed government here in Rochester. You can find out details on any of my answers at votojec.org. And I'm not an empty case when it comes to answering these. I can back what I'm saying up with data, extensive data, and years of research. These are important roles, and I don't want to minimize the importance of experience. On January 1st, the other seven elected officials are going to have a combined 12 years of city experience. We're going to have a new administrator, a new clerk, and a lot of change going on. I can bring a lot of stability. One of the things that I've always been excited to do is work with newer council members as they come on, mentor them, show them how to be involved and be successful in this position, because it is incredibly complicated. The knowledge and the depth of my answers don't just magically happen. It takes years to get to that point. I want to lead with honesty and integrity. I want to be the voice for the folks that maybe aren't just well-connected. They don't write the big campaign checks, but they have issues in their neighborhood, whether it's a water pipe that's not working correctly, or whether the sewer is backing up into their basement, or whether they just want their kids to be able to ride safely to the park. I know that a community that works for everyone and that is attractive is best for us in the long run. At votojec.org, you can find detailed 2020 platform positions, what my qualifications are, and a long list of accomplishments. I encourage everyone to go out there. And because this is a crazy year with COVID, and I normally love knocking on doors, and I can't do that this year, I am answering any question, and if you ask me to, I'll actually post my answer, so it's consistent for everybody as well. I'm willing to put in the time. I'm willing to make the sacrifice. And I'm willing to be one of the progressive voices for the city of Rochester. Thank you for your years of support. And I encourage you to please vote for me again. Honor before November 3rd. Strong preference on before.
Thank you. Candidate Mark Bransford, your closing statement.
Again, thank you for hosting the forum, and thank you, everyone, for watching. This has been an amazing six months of really hard work. I have dug in, and I have dug in deeply. I have institutional knowledge. I understand how development works in this town. I have definitely looked at the budget. I have looked at many different things, the way the city does things. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running, is because I don't think we're going in the right direction. The role of a city council person is not a difficult thing to articulate. It's a bridge between the city and the community. It's not a one-way street, like a lot of people feel like it has become. Are we moving in the right direction? In the past 12 years, we have seen a worsening housing market leading to true sprawl outside the city into neighboring communities. We have soaring property taxes, because we have been building new housing of all types next to impossible outside the city center, which puts a lot of market pressure on existing homes and raises rental, real estate tax. The city is compressing our economic development into the very heart of Rochester. Businesses were teetering before COVID and are now closing because of poor communication from the city and burdensome taxes. In voting for me, you vote for a collaborative relationship with the county, school board, small businesses, and area builders that need elbow room to create the housing we want and can afford. A vote for me is a vote for lower taxes and to have true transparency in our budget, in particular, housing. I have a plan. Read it on markbransford.com.